Everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing to the pledge for our nation's flag. Father, if you'd like to come forward, please, yes. But before you do our invocation, we had a loss this week from someone very close to us. Chief Jimmy Singletary lost his wife Tammy last Saturday. And if we could, please, before you have a prayer, let's have a moment of silence for Tammy Singletary. Thank you. Thank you, Father, please.
Gracious God, we ask your protection and blessing as we gather here this evening to discuss, to ponder and to plan for the well-being of our beloved city of Beaumont. Open our hearts and minds to be good listeners, to be respectful of the needs of all of our brothers and sisters who are represented at our meeting tonight. We ask that you bless our city, a diverse community of individuals who strive to live a common vision of peace and justice. Help us to be mindful of the needs of all, the old and the young, the healthy and the challenged, the longtime resident and the newcomer, the majority and the minority. Give us a spirit of service to one another and a spirit of fairness. Give us a spirit of equity and a spirit of compassion. We ask too that you bless our country during this challenging time. During this period of new leadership in Washington, help us to work toward healing and reconciliation. Help us to face with courage the issues of our day and to plan for the future with hope. In a special way, we ask your guidance in dealing with a pandemic that threatens not only our community and our country, but in fact is a peril that affects the whole world. Give us wisdom, give us discipline, give us patience and strength. Keep our community of Beaumont safe and healthy during these difficult times. Help us to be good stewards of the many gifts you have given us. May peace and goodwill reign in our hearts. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Everyone, please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father Leger. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Pate.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you.
We do have one proclamation this evening saluting Workforce Month, and I would like to deliver that proclamation before we move into our general business. Whereas salute to Southeast Texas Workforce Month is an awareness initiative to inform the public about workforce training and educational opportunities and available within the ultimate goal of preparing area youth for nationally recognized educational options and developing community members for fulfilling careers and helping them compete for high-wage employment opportunities in Southeast Texas. And whereas due to billions' worth of potential expansion projects in Southeast Texas, the demand for a properly skilled workforce continues to increase. And whereas on February 17th, Beaumont Independent School District, BISD, is launching a virtual college career and military readiness fair. Students, families and the community will learn about colleges and universities, familiarize students with BISD career and technical education programs, military enlistment opportunities, and provide resources about employment and workforce development through the end of the school year. And whereas the CCMR Virtual Fair will also provide information and resources in maritime, STEM, K-8 career readiness and CCMR for high school. And whereas each Thursday in February, Workforce Solutions Southeast Texas is hosting their annual Youth Career Expo. Connect to Your Future, virtually through an engaging and exciting online event platform. This innovative technological approach will reach thousands of local high school students, our workforce for the future. And whereas the Youth Career Expo, designed with the goal to provide students with knowledge of local high school, high-growth, high-demand occupations and career in Southeast Texas, has connected as many as 12,000 students over the past five years. And now therefore, I becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, to hereby proclaim February 2021 as Salute to Southeast Texas Workforce Month and urge the community to take advantage of and help spread the word about the incredible workforce opportunities available in Southeast Texas. Accordingly, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, February 2nd, 2021. And accepting today is Bill Allen, who is the President and CEO of the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce, along with Kristi Young, Advancing Education and Workforce Readiness Committee Member. Bill and those with you, please come forward. Knock our hands if you like, and I'll hand you this, and feel free to say a few words.
All right. Hey, hey, hey.
Hi, Kristi, nice to see you. Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. Thank you. Hi, nice to see you. Thank you for coming. Hi, thank you. Nice to see you.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
Hi.
Hi, Mike, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Mayor and council, thank you very much first. The fact that you recognize the importance of this, it impacts our community, it impacts our workforce, it impacts our economic development efforts. And this is a great collaborative effort between the school district, Workforce Solutions and the business community. And we really appreciate the recognition that you've given this. You had mentioned in the proclamation, 12,000 kids over five years. This is a little bit different, given it's an entire month. And right now, I believe we have 7,000 students signed up for this program in the month of February, so it should be very beneficial. Again, thank you. Eva, you want to say anything on behalf of the district?
Good evening. I'm Eva LeBlanc. I'm with Beaumont ISD Career and Technical Education Department. And we are super excited about our CCMR Virtual Fair, even though it's not the way we want to do it. It's the way it's happening. But our fair is geared toward 12th kindergarten through 12th grade. We are starting a career readiness initiative within the district for K through 8 students to close those gaps, to be able to educate them about the opportunities of higher education and training, as well as the opportunities in the Career and Technical Education Department that we offer through our many programs of study. We appreciate your support.
Thank you so much.
And good evening. I'm Pamela Wise, and I've worked for the workforce so long, I've become a senior citizen.
I'm with you on that one.
And we are very proud to serve on behalf of the Workforce Solutions Southeast Texas Workforce Development Board, Sue Daniels, our President, and Mary Hammond, our Executive Director. We are very proud and very happy to be able to bring this event to Southeast Texas. And Bill is right, we have about 7,000 students signed up. Our first day is Thursday, so I expect all of your prayers to lift us up, keep the broadband open and keep the lines and the internet up as we meet this challenge. But we have over 75 exhibitors that have set up booths, created videos for occupations, and actually, we have a focus on women in industry, so we're very excited. We thank our platinum sponsors, ISET, Industry of Southeast Texas, and also JK Chevrolet. So we'll talk about this afterwards. I'll let you know how it goes, but thank you very much. We appreciate it. And our wonderful partners, the Beaumont, the schools, Beaumont ISD, Port Arthur ISD, and all of the schools that support us in Region 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Is that all, Bill? Y'all have any?
I'm sorry?
Or is that the end? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all coming and thank you for what you're doing for our youth and our city. We do have a lot of opportunities and we make sure they can take advantage of that. Okay, so if you are here for the proclamation and you need to leave, now's the time to do so. But of course, you're always welcome to stay. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make comment on Scheduled Agenda Items 3 through 5 or the Consent Agenda, the time to do so is now. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the officer. We will call out your name. We would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. And we, right now, it's for public comment on 3 through 5 or the Consent Agenda. Items number 1 and 2 have already been heard in a joint public hearing, so are not available for comment. But if you would like to speak on one of these items, please go ahead and fill that paper out. I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for you to speak on any item you might like. I don't have any at this time, Mayor. Okay. There appears to be no one. Counsel, can, I will entertain a motion, please, on the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Felshaw. Okay. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, on this item that is a $50,000 change order to allow for smoke testing, did the, didn't the original contract allow for smoke testing, or is this additional smoke testing? Or could you explain a little bit more about that?
Well, definitely the quantities for cleaning and televising have changed. It's going to also add 64 calendar days. It says to allow for smoke testing. Let's look at the bid sheet that's attached. You can see that last item, item number, I believe it's 19, talks about changing quantity, 14,700 being added. And I don't see any smoke testing down at the bottom, so it looks like an addition.
Is that all, counsel?
Okay, item 19, that's talking about, talking about smoke testing. This is just, again, is this additional smoke testing in the first?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number 1.
Mayor and council, item number 1 is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a commercial construction renovation business in the Central Business District for property located at 747 College Street, City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Gerald Condon is requesting permission for a commercial construction renovation business. A joint public hearing held on January the 25th. The Planning Commission recommended 5 to 0 to approve the request for a specific use permit. The administration also recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, may I have a motion for item number 1, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. That's great to have that remodeled, isn't it?
It is. Thank you.
Item number 2, please.
Item number 2 is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance vacated and abandoning a 250-foot by 20-foot wide utility easement, including an existing sewer line in lots 2 through 11 in Block 12 of the Calder Edition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Fitz and Shipman Incorporated, on behalf of Monroe's Cleaners, is requesting the abandonment. Monroe owns buildings on either side of this easement and would like to combine the two structures. A joint public hearing held on January the 25th, the Planning Commission recommended 5 to 0 to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well. And I'll go back. It was actually council members that, one in particular came, you know, said, look, instead of tearing this building down, you can try to sell it. And then someone bought it, as you know, y'all approved that, and so that's a testament to y'all. Back to this item, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, counsel. You had heard the reading of item number 2. May I have a motion for this item, please?
So move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number 2, please.
Mayor and council, the next item is to consider a resolution acknowledging that Beaumont offers exclusive support for a proposed housing tax credit project known as Edson Lofts, located at the northeast corner of Pearl and Liberty Streets here downtown, as well as a commitment of development funding by the city in the form of a fee waiver. And it also acknowledges that the proposed development is located in downtown Beaumont and contributes more than any other housing tax credit project to the city's revitalization efforts. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard the reading of number 3. May I have a motion on this item, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion, and I believe Councilmember Felshaw beat you a little bit. Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Muton. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, do we know the timeframe on when this would actually proceed?
If they're approved by the state. Mr. Boone in the back, do you know the timeline?
I do believe the TDHCA usually makes their awards, their decisions in the summer. But we do have Mark Feaster here. He is with Provenant Realty. He may be able to give us a little more detail on exactly when the project might go forward if approved.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, please.
Mark Feaster with Provenant Realty. Good evening. The applications are due to THCA on March the 1st, and then the awards are approved at the July board meeting. We anticipate if everything falls into place and all the approvals are necessary, that we should be under construction in the fourth quarter of this year. And it's about a 12 to 18-month construction period.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it your intentions to use local resources on building this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have our own construction company, but they try to use local sources as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Councilmember Getz?
Mark, I know you touched on this a little bit when you were here before, but we have a bigger viewing audience tonight, perhaps because it's an evening meeting, our first of the year. Could you elaborate a little bit for the benefit of those that might have not have seen it before, what your plans would be for this building?
Sure. Right now, and please understand, we're in the early feeling-out process, so to speak. We just had our historic consultant here today to walk through it, to tell us what we can do and what we can't do. Most of it relates to the exterior, and what we intend to do there is bring it back to as close as possible to what it looked like in 1928 when it was built. What we're looking at is somewhere between, this is going to sound like a wide range, 96 to 129 units. And again, it kind of depends on what we can open up window-wise to get those in the units. They will be, it'll be a mixed income. There will be some 30% AMI units, some 50, some 60, and the balance at the market rate. I think it's, it ends up being about 60% affordable, 40% at market rates.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, thank you so much, sir, for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you, Chris. Okay, I believe we do have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no more discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, number 4.
Mayor and council, item number 4 is to consider a resolution approving video surveillance in the parking lots of the Gulf Terrace Hike and Bike Trail and the Folsom Hike and Bike Trail. Each of the parking lots have experienced multiple burglaries of parked cars during calendar year 2020. There were 16 burglaries at the Folsom location and 13 at Gulf Terrace. The last reported burglary at either location was back on December the 16th of last year. The estimated installation cost at the Folsom Hike and Bike Trail is between $8,500 and $9,500. The estimated installation cost at the Gulf Terrace location is between $12,500 and $14,000. There would be roughly $1,000 a year cost per location for cellular and licensing fees. Funds are not budgeted for this project. This item was placed on the agenda for consideration by Councilmember Getz and Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Thank you. Counsel, I'd entertain a motion on item number 4, please.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Question, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Just more of a clarification for the citizens. The largest portion of this cost is just getting power to the site.
That's, that's correct. And the hardware on the first one, they're about the same, between $3,000 and $4,000. And entry costs, to get power to the Gulf Terrace, you're right, it's more expensive for that location.
Councilmember Pate.
Kyle, do we have any idea what the cost has been to the citizens because of the burglaries? I mean, I know they don't come to us and say, this cost me $2,000 or whatever, but do we have an idea of what the average car burglary runs?
We do not.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, have we had any other of our park facilities that experienced break-ins or burglaries of vehicles?
Yes.
And has that been a, numbers as large as this?
Not that I'm aware of. Normally, our police department, they do undercover work, surveillance. I mean, if we're having a problem somewhere, anywhere in the city, they're out, doing what they do. Excellent job. They're doing it undercover, and they'll stake out certain locations and catch people. You know, these smashing grabs, for instance, they'll catch them in the act. We've had people come in from surrounding cities and do this, and we'll catch them and things quiet down. You get a new group of people that do it. So, but it could be at Parkdale Mall for a day or two, and then it's maybe somewhere in the south end, Terrill Park, and just move around the city. But most of the time, they catch them doing surveillance work. These cameras could be beneficial if the citizens need to know. You know, to catch someone, you're going to have to get a license plate, most likely, or have such a good description from the footage. Most of the time, you're going to need that license plate.
And what percentage of our other parks or buildings, do we have surveillance videos at any other parks or facilities?
No, sir.
And normally, projects such as this, it would come to council for discussion?
Well, I would, yes, because, number one, this is a policy decision by the council. We haven't done this within any of our park locations. And then, you know, there's a segment of the community, might be 10%, don't want to be filmed coming and going to a park. And then you probably have a much greater, you know, group that say, yeah, cameras are fine. There's signage right now at these two, on these two parking lots when you enter, that say that this park is under surveillance from time to time, or something like that. And that's true, because we have portable cameras that our police department uses, and they can go out and install a camera for a week, or as long as they want to, and watch it real time. But this is a little different, so when this request was brought forward by Councilmember Getz, I said, okay, that's a policy decision. The council needs to determine, do they want cameras at these locations? So that's the first question for you. And then I recommended to him that you ought to bring it to the council and have a discussion, but he wanted an up or down vote.
Okay, any other comments from counsel? Yes, Councilmember?
Okay, so, as I've said to you before, if we have documentation that other parks are experiencing these types of problems, then that's something that I would consider for cameras at those parks as well. The fact of the matter is that the hike and bike trails are somewhat different than our local parks, because when you are going to the hike and bike trail, you leave your car in the parking lot, and once you get out on the track and you disappear from view, there seems to be an element in our society that waits for that opportunity to break into the car. Whereas on the parks, most parking lots for the parks, you drive up right there and you are in visual eyesight of your car, or you can be, and there's a lot more traffic in the parks than there can be at the hike and bike trails. So when you have 31 smashing grabs inside a calendar year, and you have people that are saying that they don't want to frequent these amenities any longer because of their fear or experience in having their cars broken into, we need to act and we need to do something. The, each one of these parks cost about $850,000 to put in the cement walking paths. And it would be a shame that if our citizens felt that it was so unsafe that they can't use them. Cameras act not only to apprehend the thieves, but serve as a deterrent, because they know that they're being videoed. So with that being said, I believe that this resolution, when there's a motion and a second, offers the opportunity to have discussion, which we're having right now. I don't really discern a difference between this and a workshop. It just gives us the ability to vote on it after the discussion is complete.
Well, many times, we will have a work session and then an action item afterwards, and that one was not posted this way, so I think that's what the council member's referring to. I'm not going to speak for him. But I do also believe this is a policy decision. There are many parks in our city that you do park your car in a parking lot and go into the park. Not all of them, but there are some. As far, I am absolutely not opposed to this in any way, shape or form. I think it's a great idea. I just think it should come to us where we look at this for a policy across the city and not just in one part of the city. And I recognize that there have been more smashing grabs possibly there, because they've been very publicized. I don't know if, can you tell a city manager if the police department has looked at other parks and thefts of cars, or thefts of people, or anything like that, that, that might help with this decision?
They have all those stats. And...
I'm inclined to, not to put it off, but to ask the council to table this so we can look at every park and get the information on each park, because I think this was brought up and put, it really kind of puts us in a box to say yes or no. I'm very much in favor of it, council member, but I do believe we need to look at our entire system or our entire city as we would typically do. Sometimes we do have a work session and we'll have an action item later. And, or sometimes, but we very rarely would have something like this with an up-down vote, with no discussion or no work session to where, to where the council does not have all the information we might need to make a decision. I will say again, just to be clear, not opposed to these, very much in favor of it. I think we need to do everything, I see, thank you. I think we need to do everything that we can to deter it, but I think we need to look at it as a policy decision throughout the city. Again, I'll say it again, because I think it's very important. And so I, I don't know if anyone else would like more information on this, but I certainly would. If you decide not to, it won't hurt my feelings, but I'm going to ask that we table this for a week until we can get more information. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'm very glad to hear that you're in favor of this, and as I've said previously... and just restated a few minutes ago, if other parks come before us that have this type of demonstrated history of smashing grabs, we can consider that at this time. You know, but the policy decision shouldn't be changed on that alone. We can take each park as it comes before us. I think that if you're in favor of this for the hike and bike trails, you know, that is making a policy decision. And I think that other parks, as they come to us with a problem presenting itself, as these two have, then we consider those, so...
City manager, have we had any calls from anyone, because this has been very highly publicized, asking Jimmy Neal or any of the people in the Parks Department about cameras in other locations? And again, I have asked, and, you know, Councilmember Getz, you asked to table a texted item a couple of weeks ago, and the council gave you that opportunity. If you choose not to do that on this, then I'm disappointed. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Really, the only location we've been asked to put cameras in would be Klein. Klein is real similar to what you said before. We've got a disc golf course there, so a lot of people show up, leave their vehicles, go throughout the park. Klein's been an issue. We've had reports at Central and reports at Liberty. Those are really the main ones where we've really had those concerns.
So, I did have someone call when they saw it in the newspaper, or wherever it was in the media, I didn't see it, but about Terrill, because they walk there and they park their cars at the golf course, and they walk around the circle, and there's been some...
I haven't heard anything, but it's obviously a possibility, for sure.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Because we have a disc golf course there as well. Obviously, the golf course is a little bit different, because there's a parking lot right there, and you get a lot of traffic coming in and out. The disc golf course is probably a lot different. They're really getting away, and there's not a whole lot of people there, so I could see that being a concern as well.
Okay. So, city manager, would it be fairly easy to get those stats in a week?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I also would like to state that in no way am I in opposition to the proposal. However, I'm a bit concerned about the process, because it's showing that we've done this for years, understanding that we as legislators, it's not our responsibility or our duty to act as administrators in the city. By going around the process, it allows for individuals to make individual choices about what they think is best and where they think it's better, best served. We work as a body. We're to work as a body. That's why it's important that we have these discussions. There have been problems with a park right off of Helbig Road, about folks parking, having sex, those type of issues. Surveillance cameras might have been, might be the best thing for something like that. Klein Park, we've had, we've had problems out there for years. I have no opposition to the surveillance, but as we do this, we must do it understanding perceptions that we send to the community. What's good for one area of our city should be good throughout the city. The process normally goes that we discuss it, and we then try to get it onto an agenda so that it can be addressed. If it were just this one item, my feelings would be different. But this is not the only item that we've now had an end around, trying to get a particular item for a personal reason. The next item, I have the same issue. We go through a budget process to talk about things that we feel are important to the city as a whole, to the community, and to individual homes. That is what we do, we talk about it. If it leaves the budget, if, if in the budget discussions, we have a consensus that it will be done, that direction is given to the CEO, the city manager, to put it into the budget, so that we can plan to get that done, maybe not just in one area, but in the areas of need. That's what the process is for. If it doesn't go to a budget and go to a budget meeting for consensus, one or two councilmembers can bring it to a council discussion to make a decision, and the same thing can be done, particularly with small budget items. That can be done, but that's building a team. That's giving everyone the opportunity to say, "Okay, no problem." As we end an old year, going into a new, it's my hope that we can refocus on the greater good of our city, without regards to our own personal interests, and ignoring other parts of our city that may have similar needs that are not being addressed.
Councilmember Pate.
What kind of timeframe would we be looking at if we decided to do this today? How long would it take for that to transpire?
It depends on how fast or how quickly Entergy can get out there and provide power, and then we'd move forward with a contractor to make the installation, so it's not gonna happen in the next couple of weeks.
So, basically, if, if this was voted on tonight, we could vote on something else next Tuesday and add it?
That's not what we want to do. What you'd want to do is step back and say, number one, it's the council, what's your policy? Do you want to start installing cameras at some of these locations? And then, you could, if you voted on this, we're gonna do it. For other parks, we probably want to wait until we budget for it properly in the next budget, and then look at the stats, have some, this was, you know, put together pretty quickly, meaning you'd step back from it, once the council decided, "Yes, let's, we're okay with doing this." Then you'd look at the thirty-five parks that we have, you know, there's Wuthering Heights Park, Klein Park, as he mentioned, Terrill Park, there's a lot of locations where you get out of your vehicle and go for a walk, and they see you get out, maybe get something out of your purse, and once you're out of sight, they can do this in fifteen, twenty seconds, and they're gone. So, and you're not gonna be able to have enough cameras out there, meaning throughout our thirty-five parks to capture everything, you're not gonna be able to do it probably all over these two parking lots, you can try, and it's maybe worth, it's worth the effort. But what I'm saying is, normally, you'd have a long discussion, like Councilman Samuel said, at some type of work session, and y'all have done this many times throughout the years on many issues, where you talk about it, the who, what, when, where, and why, and if there's a consensus to move forward, we look at it, go back to the staff, and then plan to achieve whatever you set out to accomplish.
How long would it take to analyze these other parks?
Well, we're not gonna go analyze thirty-five parks, we'd go back and get the stats from the police department.
Which is what I was asking for.
Where are you having problems, what locations, are any of them within these thirty-five parks?
Yeah, when I say these parks, I was talking about the ones that you want to analyze, not all of them.
No, I'd, I'd meet with Jimmy Neal and the police department, and we'd look at, where are we having, you know, issues, and go about it that way.
So, with that said, though, if you say you're gonna look at it next week and bring another one back in next week, what's the difference in holding this one and doing them all at once? I mean, is there a burning desire to go fast on this? This is something that's been talked about, I think, because you brought it up to me.
This was driven by Councilmember Getz because of social media.
But how long ago?
And it is correct, there's been some problems at these locations.
But how long ago?
Ma'am?
But how long ago did it first come up? Several weeks?
Uh, probably in the last month or two.
No, sir, we, we have had documentation of smashing grabs at these parks, going back since the parks were created.
Understand, I'm not, I'm not suggesting otherwise, councilmember.
I, I think it's been more than a couple of weeks.
I got you.
I was saying, a couple of months?
Couple of months, yes.
Okay, so, my point is, is that it's been a couple of months, we held it for a night meeting, I guess.
That's correct.
So, but yet, our pants are on fire to do this tonight, but yet, we've held it for a couple of months, your words, for a night meeting. Councilmember Neal?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we have a workshop.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
On the policies for all cameras at all parks and city facilities next week.
Great motion, and I'll second that, but you need to, I believe you need to withdraw the original motion. Councilmember Getz?
I'm not prepared to withdraw my original motion.
Okay, who seconded that motion?
I'll second.
No, who seconded the first motion?
Oh.
I did.
Okay, are you willing to withdraw your second?
Before I do, let me say this, if I may, if, if, I'm not breaking protocol.
No.
I want everyone to understand that I am concerned about all the parks within our city, and I do hear you, Councilman Samuel, I hear you. I'm not concerned just about one side of our city, I'm concerned about the entire city. I've made the statement to the city manager and to Councilman Getz that wherever we have a park that meets this criteria, then we need to address that park. I do get frustrated sometimes with how long it takes to get things done within government. I know a lot of the restrictions and limitations are there to make sure things are done right, and I do hear you about the team approach, I hear that, and I agree with that a hundred percent. I feel at some point, we have to get started, and we have to start addressing these issues. I, I know that we can, we can, I, I'm perfectly fine in tabling this until we can gather the rest of the information and come back and look at it as a whole. I know that anything under fifty thousand, you can, the city can take action on it, but because this one is addressing policy, that's what sets us apart, correct? It's not the amount of money.
Or that the administration didn't bring it forward.
Okay, but it's...
That's correct.
But it is establishing policy, that's where we start getting, that's where we have to slow down, correct? It's not the amount of money.
It's not the amount of money, and let me, let me say that, yes, because of sometimes federal regulations, state regulations, things move slowly in government, we all know that. There's ordinances and policies and procedures that oftentimes you all adopt. I will say, we do move quickly in many, many cases, meaning the police department, they've done undercover work at these locations already. They've...
They've caught people.
They catch people all the time in our park system, all the time, so they do move quickly, but it does take time for something like this, because four or more of you have to vote on something like this, or, because it's, it is a policy change or a new policy, but then normally, when you have to vote on something, you have to post it, and we have to do our homework and look at the who, what, when, where, and why, so it does take time, you're right. And then, in this case, you know, we have to go out and work with Entergy to get estimated costs to provide power to the site, and you have to go out for informal bids, and where the bids look like for this type of hardware, because he basically said, "I want this, this, and this," and then staff went and had to go get good cost, and that does take, that'll take a couple of weeks. So, yes, it's correct, you're correct, it does take time to move forward, but it's not something that we're slowing down on our end. So, we, you have two moving parts over here, you've got the police department out there working undercover and doing what they do immediately, and then staff's got to go through the proper, got to do our homework, again, to go work with Entergy and others to come back and give you this estimated cost, so you have the information to vote on.
And I never meant to imply that our city staff doesn't work hard, or you guys do move, I mean, you move as quickly as you can, within the restrictions and limitations of government, and that's what I was referring to, that sometimes I want to move quicker, I know you do too, we all do. But I just, I just hope that this council will make a decision that if we table this, we will come back to this for the sake of our citizens, because our citizens...
I think that's been said, councilmember, that's, no one's ever said that they didn't want to do that.
No, 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 I, I'm not saying they, they have, I'm just saying, I hope that we don't kick the can down the road, only because our citizens, we, we as a council, I know, are committed to improving the quality of life in Beaumont, and part of that has to do with addressing crime. And so, am I willing to table this so that we can approach this as a team and address these other parks? Absolutely. I just hope that we're able to do that and, and, and take action on, on, on behalf of our citizens. So, with that said, I will withdraw my second.
Mayor?
Okay, yes. What I would like to do is go ahead and entertain the motion that's on the floor, if you don't have something that pertains to Councilmember Getz's motion, because the council member here has, he's rescinded his second, so I need to call for a vote, because Councilmember Getz is...
I have a point of clarification.
Go ahead. Is it for your motion?
No, it's for the motion to, it's the motion to, the motion to table was for an indefinite period of time.
Okay, well, let us get to that, please, all right? Are you leaving your motion on the floor?
I am gonna leave my motion on the floor.
Okay, is there a second on the motion to...
Mayor, I'd like to address the motion.
All right, go ahead.
Councilmember Getz. It's not that I oppose the action. I believe it needs to be addressed, and I think there can be good with the, the proposal. The mayor's asked for one week. One week is not gonna kill anything, it's not gonna change much of anything, because the process is gonna take longer than a month. One week, I think, is reasonable. She's made that request, and I simply...
With, with the understanding that the motion, that this resolution will be coming back up next week, I will withdraw my motion for a week.
Because there wouldn't be a second, I don't think, so that's good. Okay, then there is a motion by Councilmember Neal to tailor, table, but were you, were you requesting a week? Can we have the information in a week, if we're not talking cost, just stats?
I think we can.
Okay. At the end of the day, the council could decide that we want to do more, so we'll just have to look at it, because this needs to be done in the right way, and not pushing something to where it looks, as you say, like, because everything on here is West End, so that is, I just have a problem with that, just saying. Thank you, Councilmember Neal, for that motion, is there a second on that motion? There's a motion and a second on the floor to table it. Councilmember Neal and Councilmember Samuel, all in favor of tabling for a week?
Let's check.
For a week, until we can get the stats. If the council still does not have enough information, or if the staff can't get that, we need to keep it open to allow that to happen, not planning on it, but that's what I believe should happen, but I'll talk about that when it comes up. So, there is a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, next item, please.
Item number five is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to go out for bids for the construction of a dog park at Rogers Park. Councilmembers Getz and Neal have requested a vote by the city council on this item. If approved, the facilities department will move forward to develop specifications for the project and go out for bids for construction. The dog park would have similar amenities as the one located at Ida Reed Park. This project is not funded or listed in the capital program or the capital reserve fund. Because the, because the specific amenities have not been finalized, the cost estimate is between seventy-five thousand to one-hundred thousand.
Okay. Counsel, is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve the resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, I'll open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Getz?
Okay, so, this item has been pending for over two years, and there are over two-thousand-five-hundred citizens that have signed a petition requesting a dog park at Rogers Park. A dog park at Rogers Park is a quality-of-life type of item that is relatively inexpensive and is something that is desired by many, many of our fellow citizens. Yes, we already have a dog park, it is rarely used, there are problems at the dog park, there's a lot of homeless people that congregate there, there's a lot of panhandling that goes down, some of that is aggressive panhandling, and I have talked to many people that tell me that they are afraid to go to the Ida Reed Dog Park, and that's a shame, and we're trying to address some of those issues. Rogers Park is the most heavily-used park in the city of Beaumont. Rogers Park is the most heavily used park in the city of Beaumont. It is in the midst of a neighborhood community. There are apartments nearby where people don't have the ability to let their dogs run freely, because we have a leash law here in the city of Beaumont. The, a dog park offers the opportunity to let your dog get out and get some exercise and run freely, because it's a fenced area. The portion of Rogers Park where this would be located is to the west of the tennis courts. It's a very underutilized portion of the park, and this would be a wonderful amenity that is desired by many, many, many of our citizens. The price is relatively inexpensive, and I must point out that because we were fortunate enough to sell all Fire Station Number One and realize over three hundred thousand dollars from that sale, and also able to sell the Melton facility and realize a couple of hundred thousand dollars from that sale, the city is in a very good financial situation right now. I have heard that we should take care of our infrastructure problems before we do anything else. Well, I think we're capable of doing that and this at the same time. We are addressing our infrastructure problems, we do so daily. During a pandemic, people are urged to get outside and, you know, they, when you take your dog to a dog park, you have the ability to get outside and be away from other people and still get some exercise for your dog and for yourself, walking around through the park. People are using our parks probably now as much as ever, maybe more than ever. And this is the type of quality of life project that adds luster to our city. So I would really, really like to see this project move forward.
Okay. Any other, um, quick discussion? Councilmember Pike?
Uh, Cal, when we built Ida Reed, wha- what was our, can you give me an idea of what the cost was? Some idea, not precisely.
Remember, Jimmy, somewhere probably between seventy-five and a hundred thousand.
Pretty much what this one would be?
Yes.
And the neighborhood association that started the
It was their idea and they brought, they chipped in money, uh, maybe Mayor
I think it was ten thousand.
Ten thousand, fifteen thousand, my recollection is somewhere.
That was the Old Town Neighborhood or the Oaks Historic District? Yes, Councilmember?
Again, um, now, this is one of the projects that I do have a problem with. And it's not because of the project itself. But we as council members are to look at the greater good for the masses of our community. This is something that appropriately should go to a budget consideration, budget, uh, meeting, consideration. It was there at one time, as I believe, um, um, at, in the past. However, since that time, we've had hurricanes, now we have pandemics. Uh, but that's not the biggest problem. The difference between a council member and an administrator is administrators come up with ideas that they feel are to the benefit of the city, and they bring it, present it to council for council consideration and approval. Council members, their, our responsibility is to bring our ideas or considerations to the council for consideration, discussion, and possibly movement toward finalizing that or getting it into a position to be considered. I believe that there's a difference between quality of life and the necessities of life. We have individuals that live in communities whereby they are having problems with their infrastructure. Getting their, their system into their house, the water, the, I mean, the water and sewer, getting, getting the water into their house, getting the sewer out. Those are primary concerns. How would I feel if I had a problem that we've not yet rectified with water and sewer, but we're taking money out of our budget to put into a dog park when we have a dog park? I understand this may be something considered and wanted by twenty-five hundred people, but this is a city of a hundred nineteen thousand. The process works. It may be slow at times, but it works. For us to take monies that we have to be concerned about our infrastructure, water, sewer, street and drainage. We're working on that. We spend millions of dollars each year for that. But do you think that matters to someone that has sewer backing up into their house? We have people coming here. We're working on it. But yet, that's one concern. But when I see you wanting to remove those things that are beneficial for children, such as basketball goals, but it's important, rather than trying to find a way to remedy the problem at the present dog park, to attract people to that park. In the same park where we took our basketball goals, we now want to put a dog park. The process works. We go through a budget every year to identify those projects that we feel unnecessary. If it were necessary, it would be in the budget by this council, each one of us. If it's a necessity, we would address that. But not even to take it to a workshop to bring it to council members' attention and allow us to discuss this intelligently. It's really offensive to try to go around and put it in our face to make a decision without discussing it to one another. And I, I'll allow you to make your comment.
Go ahead, Councilmember Getz.
So, no.
Oh, I thought you were
No, I'll let him
Oh, okay.
I, I don't interrupt him, so I'm at
I thought you were conceding the floor, go ahead, please.
No. So, with this, there is too much going on right now. There are too many people hurting right now. In the midst of a pandemic, we're gonna go into our fund balance? The fund balance has been our saving grace after hurricanes. We've not had to wait for the federal government to come in and give us our money to get things done, to get our city up and running. It's because we've had a healthy fund balance. When we've gone out for bonds or certificates of obligation, we've been able to do that without problems because we have a healthy fund balance. That is not what a fund balance is for, not for someone's special projects. Each year we do this. A hundred thousand dollars. If we look at our public works projects, as well as our water and sewer projects, there are many problems we can resolve with a hundred thousand dollars. Those are necessities of life, not quality of life, they're necessities for people. What's the most important thing to each one of us? Our homes, the sanctity of our homes. To make sure we get water in, and some complain about the color of our water or the quality of our water, but getting water in and getting sewer out. The aesthetics. What are we saying to our citizens? That's what I'm concerned about. Right over in Piccadilly Neighborhood, they're still having problems with water backing up. Sending me pictures with sewer coming out the drain. But we say we're working on it, and we are. But then to come up and say, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars for a dog park when we already have a dog park? That just doesn't make sense to me, that's just me. I believe the process works. I have no problem with considering a dog park in our budget process. If the consensus of council says yes, that's fine. If the consensus of council says, well, well, we believe it should be done right now, then that's y'all.
Is that it, Councilmember, for now?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Getz?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, what is our fund balance at the present time? Has it ever been higher?
No.
Okay. So, we have a fund balance that is, is at its highest point in the history of Beaumont. In fact, last week, we spent, or authorized to be spent, I believe, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of our fund balance to pay for some outfall improvements at Magnolia Cemetery. It wasn't budgeted for. Wasn't budgeted for. But we went ahead into our fund balance to pay for that. I pointed out when I first spoke that we have realized money from the sale of capital assets on two occasions in this fiscal year. The sale of Fire Station Number One, the sale of the Melton Facility. So, it's offensive to me to hear it being said that we don't have the money to do this, or it's not the appropriate way. We, as a council, are discussing this right now. Anything that you have to say can be discussed right now. We don't have to have a work session on it. We can discuss it right now. The administration has gone out and gotten some preliminary numbers as to what this is going to cost, and we can also see what it costs to build the Ida Reed Park. So we have an idea of generally what we're talking about. And really what we're just talking about is putting up some fencing primarily. That's, that's the big component of the cost, putting up some fencing.
Okay.
And, and so, just, excuse me. So, it seems to me that when we are talking about something that twenty-five hundred people, more than twenty-five hundred people, has said that they want, and I'm not seeing people on the other side then saying they don't want it. You know, I, I haven't had anybody say, this is a terrible idea. Now, I agree, infrastructure is important. It is very important. And if we were ignoring our infrastructure, I would have to say, well, Councilmember Samuel, you know, you've got a point, but we're not ignoring our infrastructure. We are moving forward with our infrastructure repairs. Every day, every week, every month. We have pipe bursting contracts out, we have, uh, pipes being replaced. We have things that are being done. So, to say a hundred thousand dollars is going to break the bank, it's just not right.
Okay, so
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, and I have something after you.
Okay. I understand, Councilman, but I guarantee you, there's at least three thousand people in the city of Beaumont that would love for, to have a hundred thousand dollars to clean up the streets in their neighborhoods. To have crews going through to get trash off the main arterial streets. I guarantee you they'd do that, but we don't have the opportunity to talk about those things because it's not posted and we're in an agenda item. That would be able to be discussed if we were doing this in a work session. So, that is my concern. This is a personal project for you. And you wanted it done, and you chose to go around the standard process to get it done. That presents a problem.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes.
I am elected to represent approximately thirty thousand people in Ward Two. And twenty-five hundred, I don't know if they're all living Ward Two, or some might live in Ward One. In fact, I know some of them live in Ward One. Some of them probably live in Ward Three, and some of them probably live in Ward Four. It's not personal for me. My job is to bring matters to the city council, and as you said, to the administration, to try to get something done when something presents itself. This was not Mike Getz's idea, it was a constituent's idea. A constituent who, because of her children having homework tonight, could not be here today. But she had a, a dream and an idea, and she started a petition drive two years ago. It was written on the front page of the Beaumont Enterprise. And after two years, we haven't been able to move this any closer to fruition. So, it is time, it is past time to do this. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can work on infrastructure, we can clean our streets, we do clean our streets at the same time. And if there's anything that you want to bring up at any council meeting about something that needs to be done, I say put it on the agenda, let's discuss it. But that's what is on the agenda tonight, is to authorize the city manager to go out for bids. This, this isn't even, this isn't even authorizing the construction of a dog park. It is authorizing the city manager to go out for bids to find the tune, the numbers as to what that would cost. We would still have to come back, as I understand it, Mr. Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, once you get those bids, and, and vote again. Is that not true?
No, you would have to do that, but I'd hate to, you know, take two to four staff people to work on this, put the specifications together, go out for bids. Takes a lot of work, so if you really were gonna move forward, and, I mean, you don't want to start the process and go out for bids unless you really want to see it through.
Councilman, if I, if it wasn't a personal, uh, pet project, that's okay, I apologize for that. And really, I'm not trying to convince you that you're not representing your constituency, because you very well, uh, are. Uh, but I'm talking to other council members and saying to you, there are individuals, there are things that are necessities that has to be done that's not being done, that we need to address. And if a dog park is of that type of importance, that we, it will totally bypass our budgetary process to you, then so be it. I just, I'm expressing the way I observe it to be, and I believe the necessities are the areas that merit going around and bumping other projects. Because we have a number of projects already in the capital program that are not being considered or funded. But by going this way, am I correct, Mr. Manager, does that bump, uh, some of the projects? Does that go in front of projects that we've had on the books for two or three years?
Yes, you have a lot of projects in the capital program, for example. See, this was originally in the capital program. I put it in there for the construction of three dog parks citywide, including one at Rogers Park.
Exactly.
And I think the number was four hundred thousand dollars for those three parks. And it was taken out of the capital program when I submitted the fiscal year twenty twenty-one plan. Uh, I took it out, we streamlined it, and, uh, you know, we didn't feel like some of them was probably gonna move forward within the next year or two because of the, you know, because of COVID-nineteen. because of COVID-19 and the financial challenges. I need to clarify, do we have a $44 million in our fund balance?
Thank you, that was my next question. I was dying to ask.
And that's, you know, we're in excellent financial condition for a number of different reasons. However, you're planning to utilize at this time 3.7 million of that $44 million just to pay for our expenditures.
To balance the budget.
To balance, yes, yes, ma'am, for fiscal year 2021. So, we have a lot of challenges, as y'all know. And because of that healthy fund balance, that's enabled us. We didn't have to ask you to, you know, to increase taxes. Our civilian employees are not getting a wage increase this year. A lot of tough stuff, but that healthy fund balance has allowed us, again, to balance the budget. So, if you really get technical about it, normally, when a project is greater than $100,000 and has a useful life of at least 10 years, it's in the capital program. If it's $100,000 or less, usually, you know, we'll budget for it in the capital reserve, right? You, the council, transfer money from the fund balance, or because our expenditure came in less than we anticipated, every year we'll come to you if we need it and say, "Look, you need to shore up these different funds, which you all have always supported." So, when we sell an asset or a building, for example, like the fire station or the former Melton YMCA, that helps. That'll go, in this case, it'll go into the capital reserve fund, where we pay for facility improvements, which I'd say this is a facility improvement at Rogers Park, probably less than $100,000. It's where we buy equipment and vehicles. Y'all are familiar with that. Just know, this year, because of challenges, we're planning to spend 3.8 million out of fund balance. That's just in the capital reserve to make the facility improvements we need to, buy the equipment we need to, police vehicles, ambulances, go on down the list. So, yes, selling those two properties helped a lot. However, we're still planning to spend well over $3 million. And what you'll have to do, probably later this fiscal year, is shore up that capital reserve fund again. Where does it come out of? Fund balance.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that, because that is the thing that I wanted you to say, because I know that we have just talked about this. And, you know, unlike some governmental entities, we have to balance our budget. And many times, we haven't for a long time, had to go into our fund balance to balance our budget. But almost $4 million is more than we've had to do for a very long time. Let me just say too, I think that hearing what is being said, this is more about the process than the dog park. A process to do things in the right way and to involve the entire council. I feel like that doing something like this puts the council colleagues in a box. Okay, I'm gonna force you to do this. Let's not do that. We want to work together. And, I mean, I'd love to have four dog parks throughout the city. And I would work to get that done if I were gonna be here. But I just think that the way this was done, and Councilmember Getz, you said, "I haven't heard anybody say this is a terrible idea." Well, that's because we're having a discussion today. If we had a work session like we typically would, and the council does tell the staff to bring it back, that's usually when we hear from people after we discuss it. It's not when we bring something to a vote, if that's already done. So, I would be willing to bet there are people out there that feel the way that Councilmember Samuel does. I am 100% supportive of the animals in our city, of all people. I'm a mayor that brought a no-kill city to our city in the last two years. We've been almost three years. We used to euthanize 300 animals. We did, a month. And now we don't any. We send them out to other states. We have people that work as volunteers that work very hard to do that. So, this is not about not wanting to support the quality-of-life initiatives for the animals. I absolutely do. But I just think that this process, I would love to vote for it, but this process is wrong. It is wrong. I know you have your hand up, I see you. And this is not about me not wanting to do something that you want to do. I'd be saying the same thing if it were anybody else up here. This, I have, we've never, that I can remember, had so many items that are brought up-down vote, up-down vote, up-down vote. Make them do it, make them do it, without going through the process of the council discussing it. It takes four votes to do anything. And we need to discuss that with each other. And I think that we have to, we have to present, even though you represent, people represent different wards, and some are at large like me, we still, as a whole, need to look to the whole city and make sure we're being fair and equitable, and that we're not looking at something, I mean, if you really look at tonight, I mean, that's what it's about, and I recognize that. And more power to you. I want to vote for this, but I can't vote for it tonight.
Mayor? We're talking about the process. And Mayor, you just talked about your love for our animals. It appears that the process is such that the city manager with a stroke of a pen can take something out of the budget or something out of the capital program that was put in there because a prior council had asked it to be put in there.
No, he put that in.
And, no, excuse me. And so, we're talking about the process. Where in the last two years has any process been pushed forward for a dog park? It hasn't. You know, so I've been waiting patiently, patiently, for two years. And I see that we have, in the capital plan, an unfunded desire to build dog parks. Okay? Of course, when it was put in the capital plan by the city manager, there was no hue and cry to build three dog parks. There was one dog park that was being asked for, one.
I think you were just trying to be fair and equitable.
There was...
Okay, I'll let you...
I mean...
I know.
If there's other information out there that I haven't heard, I apologize. But I know that there was a desire to build a dog park at Rogers Park two years ago in 2019.
Did we have a work session that I forgot? I'm just asking. I'm not being smart, I'm just asking the question.
I don't know that we had a work session. I don't honestly recall whether or not we've had a work session or not. I'll defer to you, Councilmember.
And then, would you, if you don't mind, Councilmember Neil, because you got the charter out, and you're probably gonna talk about the process. So, let me ask the city management.
I don't want to get in the back and forth with him.
But I would like to know about what you took things out.
Correct. If you read the city charter, the city manager is responsible for submitting the budget on an annual basis by August the 15th, and the capital program, actually, before that. So, it's my responsibility to submit the capital program and the budget, which you vote on. So, you sit there and say, "By the stroke of the pen, that I make these changes." That's what I do on an annual basis. What is outside the process is bringing something like this. I don't think the mayor's seen it in 30 years. Councilman Samuel, in over 30 years, a council member tried to do this. I have not. So, normally, something, it is a process, and it's a longstanding process for decades. And the way it works is something's either in the budget or it's in the capital program, or you, a council member, I've seen a council member, well, really haven't seen one do this before you. You can bring items to discuss so everyone knows what he or she's trying to move forward, and you all talk about it. Normally, you do those type of big-ticket items, right, at an off-site work session, which we have one or two times a year. I have not seen a council member try to bring something for an up-or-down vote, which the rules do allow for. Your rules, that you adopted, allow you to do this today. However, it's not, it's not within our normal practices at all. And I asked him not to do this. I knew it would be controversial. I knew this was a distraction. I asked him again not to do it, but he has every right to do it, according to y'all's rules. Just want to make that clear.
Understand. Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify on the charter, under the budget, Section 19, capital program, it is true that the city manager does own the capital plan. With that being said, I would like to withdraw my motion to second it, and I would like to make a new motion to request a workshop next week pertaining to the 2021 capital plan, and also a workshop specifically on dog parks.
Okay. So, will you withdraw your motion?
I will not.
Okay. Is there a second for Councilmember?
I'll second.
No, wait, wait, wait. A council, a second for, his motion has been withdrawn. So, I'm asking for a second for Councilman Getz's motion to approve the dog park. I don't think...
No.
Okay. I thought you misunderstood that. I'm not trying to change it, if that's what you...
No, that is not what I was seconding.
So, let me understand. Is there not another council member here willing to second the request to have the city manager go out for funding on the dog park, to go out for bids? That's all we're asking for. That's the only agenda item, is to ask him to, we're not asking him to build it. We're asking him to go out and get some bids, and then we would come back. And so, if there's nobody else here to second that, then it dies for lack of a second.
Although, Councilmember Neeld has made a motion that we bring it back in a work session the way that it would be done normally.
Can I clarify something?
Sure.
Councilman Getz, if we could just move this one week, you will gain more support by the rest of the council.
Yeah.
I thought your motion, Councilmember Neeld, was to talk about all the capital plans.
And specifically the dog park.
Okay, if you want to do it that way, that's fine. We can wait a week. I will withdraw my motion for that purpose.
Okay, he's withdrawn, so do I need, I need a motion to table it? So, you've made that motion, right? And there's a second on the floor. And it will come back to us. We're loading you up pretty good. Councilmember Neeld and Councilmember Pape. So, you need to let us know if, you know, we've loaded you up with a lot of stuff. We had a lot of controversial things that were put on this agenda that were, in my opinion, not done properly. No fault of yours. I understand what you're saying, that you did try to change that. But if we need, if you need to give us information that maybe you can't get everything, let us know that, okay?
Mayor, if I may, you offered your opinion that this wasn't done properly. And yet, the city manager has said that I have every right to do this.
Okay, let me rephrase for your benefit.
Thank you.
And I think, just like Councilmember Samuel said, if you want to be that way about it, yes, you had every right to do it, but it's not, has never been done. We need to talk about things as a council. It takes four votes to do anything. It shows if you go out and you try to do something on your own, it sometimes doesn't work, and that's played to fruition. So, you had every right to do it. Do I think it's right? No. That was what I was trying to say. And it's not about you.
In both instances, I had a second, so, okay.
You did. You had every right to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, did we make, there's a motion to second, we haven't voted yet. All in favor of the motion by Councilmember Neeld? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Aye.
Sorry?
Aye.
She said aye.
Oh, aye, okay. I thought you were, okay. All right. All right, that was item number five. And I believe we have some work sessions.
We do. We have three discussion items, mayor and council. Now or after any of them, if you ever want to take a five-minute break, it's up to you if to move forward. The first item is to review and...
Wait, can we take a break now?
That's up to the mayor, y'all.
Okay, do y'all want to take a break? Let's say 7:30, just five minutes, is that enough?
Sure.
7:30, please. We will now recess and come back in five minutes.
Mayor and council, the first discussion item is to review and discuss proposed city charter amendments. This was actually brought forward, and it was Councilmember Neeld's idea when he was elected, and it was a good one, we needed, needed to do it, and city staff has worked hard over the last year, year and a half. The city attorney has, all of our department directors, the city clerk, so the city attorney's going to lead you through the different proposed charter amendments, which you'll vote on next week, and you'll vote on those items to place on the May ballot, and that, that's the process, and turn it over to Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
...before you start, these are the ones that we've been given, right, that we've talked about, or are you going to tell us if there's anything to do? I just don't want people to think we're bouncing this almost all of the time.
No, 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 we workshop these.
...for any listening audience.
Yeah, we have workshop these, I want to say, three times.
Three times.
And what we're doing tonight is, we're, we've talked about the changes that we would like to present to the voters, to the citizens. Tonight, what we have done is translated those changes into what would appear as ballot language. So, what you'll see on the screen is what you'll see on the ballot, unless there's some changes. And we can start with Article one, section three, which is the meets and bounds description of the city limits of Beaumont, and what we are suggesting, the proposed language to be is that shall Article one, section three of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to clarify that the meets and bounds description may be adjusted from time to time by properly adopted ordinances of the city council of Beaumont. What we had originally planned to do was have the boundary of the city of Beaumont recertified, resurveyed. We hired Mark Whiteley's firm, Tom Rowe, and he was not able to do it, there were gaps in what he was able to do with the information that he was provided by us, with old records, recent records. So, what we are proposing to do, and I've looked at the charters back to nineteen seventy-two, and the meets and bounds that are in the current charter are the same meets and bounds that was in the nineteen seventy-two charter. And we've had several charter amendments since then, and the boundary has not been addressed. So, what we're suggesting is leave the boundary as it is, and indicate that they may be adjusted from time to time. And we do that anyway when we have annexations and disannexations. And together with the meets and bounds in the charter, and those, those ordinances, determines the jurisdictional boundary of the city.
Okay. Council, any questions on this item? Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next one is Article one, section four of the charter, city of Beaumont be amended to amend the caption and repeal sections A and B to remove the methods of annexation by ordinance or petition, and defer to the manner and form of annexation as authorized by the general laws of the state of Texas. And again, the charter provides for petition in ordinance, in order to, but, in order to annex properties into the city. And we're suggesting that we take that out and rely on what the state law says that the process for annexation should be. And it's annexation as well as disannexation, where we give properties back to parties outside the city limits.
Council, question two?
Sure. Oh, you said, can you? Are there any questions? Okay, the next is Article three, section three of the charter of city of Beaumont be amended to remove the prohibition on a person's eligibility to serve the city who is in arrears in the payment of any liability to the city. There has been an attempt to have this amendment made and provision removed from the charter as recent as ninety-eight. It failed, so it remains in the charter, and there's a similar provision at Article seventeen, section eleven, which remains in the charter because the charter proposition failed. This is another attempt to remove it. It's been determined that it's a violation of the equal protection clause to the, to the U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, where we cannot prohibit someone from running for office because they may owe a debt to the, to the city, to the government.
So, then, we put this forward, and I know, I remember, it's failed several times, I get it. So, when it does fail like that, that it is, or it was state, you know, what do we do?
It, it remains in the charter as unenforceable.
Okay.
It's what's.
So, you can't enforce it.
Yeah, it's just presumptively invalid, is what, how the law recognizes it. And if we were to enforce it, we could be, the provision could be challenged as unconstitutional, and then our charter provision would be determined to be unconstitutional.
Okay, council member?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Attorney, we could back up just a second. Article one, section six, talking about change of wards and boundaries?
Your mic's off.
Sorry, Article one, section six, talking about the change of wards and boundaries. My question on that, we just wrapped up the twenty twenty census, so I'm assuming something's coming on the restructuring of the wards, but this thing leads me to believe that the council, gives the council a lot of authority on that.
The way that process works, once we get the numbers back from the census, there will be an evaluation made as to whether or not the boundaries need to be changed. We'll do a redistricting study.
Okay.
And that, of course, the council will participate in that, and should there be needs to change the boundaries, we'll do that at that time.
All right, thank you.
That was, you were just bringing it up, because we had passed it and it wasn't on the list, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I have a question about Article one, section three.
Okay.
Your, your mic's off.
We all, we came back from break and forgot to turn our mics on.
Thank you. Does that, no, okay.
The meets and bounds description?
No, no, the one that we were on before, that you were about to.
Article three, section first?
Yes. Yes. With that, when it says eligibility to serve, it was mentioned that to serve as an elected official, but does that also refer to, to being employed?
Well, Article seventeen, section eleven, which is one that we're addressing, deals with municipal office holding or employment.
Okay.
So, that makes that provision suspect as well.
Okay.
Okay, is that all? Thank you.
That's all.
Article three, section twelve of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to remove the reference to a summary auditor's report, and providing for the full report to be posted on the city's website rather than in a local newspaper. And there is just a small reference in section twelve, it says, "A summary of said report," and that's the auditor's report, "shall be posted," or "shall be published in a local newspaper within thirty days after receipt of same." And what we're suggesting is that the A summary comes out, and it will read, "Said report shall be posted on the city's website."
So, we would put the whole report on, instead of just a summary that we would be required to put in the newspaper? I like that. Anybody?
Article four, section two of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to remove the qualification that election officials reside in the same election precinct in which they are to serve, and remove the requirement that returns are to be canvassed within five days after the election, and provide that returns be canvassed within the time period prescribed by the Texas Election Code. And what this is doing is, is saying that those folks who work election can work outside of the precinct where they live, because we have, you know, voting.
Super senate.
Yeah.
Yeah, super, super voting places.
So, you can vote anywhere.
You can vote anywhere.
Where do you live, right?
Yeah. And at the same time, you take the five-day meet the canvas, because that's in conflict with the election code.
That came up in the last election.
And that came up in the last election.
Okay.
So, that clarifies that. Article four, section four of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to bring the charter into compliance with the Texas Election Code as it relates to when an official, when all officials, excuse me, duly elected shall take office, and that's going back to the election code as to when the votes are canvassed and when the official takes office. Okay, Article six, section two of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to add language to provide for available reserves to be considered as a component of total proposed expenditures in the budget. And this is a finance area, and what it's being suggested is that reserves be included as part of the components of the expenditures.
Right.
Can you explain that one a little more to us?
Ladies terms.
I think Todd's here.
I don't know.
Yay, Todd.
Or Kyle, either one.
So, councilman, the way the charter reads right now, it says, "Total proposed expenditures shall not exceed total anticipated revenues." And the Government Finance Officers Association, it is their, it is their opinion also that revenues includes reserves of fund balance. So, we have a minimum fund balance of twenty percent, so anything above twenty percent could be included as revenues. People that aren't well-versed in finance, they just read revenues as money coming in that year, they don't basically interpret that as reserves of fund balance, so we just want to make that clarification, because that's how we budget.
Yeah, fair enough, that's what threw me off in twenty nineteen, was our expenditures exceeded our revenues.
Right.
Okay.
And I didn't know how to put that in layman's terms.
Senate.
I did it as simply as I could, understanding that the citizen will have to understand it to vote it up or down. Article six, section six of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to allow the council to insert new items or increase or decrease items in the budget without the requirement of an additional public hearing on the budget. And what this is intended to do is to give the council flexibility to add items or increase amounts without have, going back and having another, posting for another public hearing, having a public hearing, and then being able to add the, the item.
And so, how are we handling that now?
You are handling that now by requiring another public hearing.
Okay.
Which complicates the process.
Can you give us a clarification on, on example?
Yeah, it's never, I've never seen anyone try to do it, never seen a council try to do it, actually. However, because right now, we'll get to it later, we're going to recommend that you follow state law, right now, the charter speaks to, the budget has to be adopted by the twenty-seventh, by the council, or it's automatically adopted. But let's say you had a public hearing scheduled on the budget, and you all wanted to insert something, which you could, and you come back the next week and do it, you may not have time to post for another public hearing before that twenty-seventh date. Sometimes you, you get close to that in late September. So, this would, again, allow the council, if you wanted to, to, to make some changes to a proposed budget, and you wouldn't have to have additional public hearing. We already have to meet all these state new regs, that they change pretty much every legislative session, making it more difficult on cities to adopt your budget.
Yeah.
And we try to meet all those timelines, again, set out by the state of Texas, and sometimes they're in conflict with our city charter, and.
But this is not being put on there because we've tried to do it or want to do it, it's just to allow for it if we had to do it, for whatever reason, because you've, you said you've never, we've never had that before, I don't remember us having it.
I've never seen a council meaning, I've never seen a council try to, I'm not, it may start happening soon, I've never seen a council try to amend the budget I proposed in my career.
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
So, and if, if they wanted to, it would have gotten messy, and I think we had some, two council members that were talking about it last year, and it's like, wait a minute, you know, here's what the charter said, and here's state law, and trying to meet these deadlines, you can do it, but it may, it may move us beyond September the twenty-seventh. Make this change, council won't have that second public hearing requirement.
But the council would have to vote on it if it happened anyway, so it would be, have to be four votes.
It would, you just wouldn't have to have a public hearing.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the next item of Article six, section seven is a similar, it just references repealing, it, it's repealed to remove the requirement of the additional public hearing. Hold, Article six, section eight. This is a new one, you haven't seen this one before. And what we're suggesting here is that Article six, section eight of the charter be amended to bring the charter into compliance with the Texas Tax Code as it relates to the required vote of the council setting the tax rate. The way it currently reads, "The budget shall be adopted by the favorable votes of at least a majority of all members of the council." The tax code section twenty-six oh five makes a provision that if in order setting a tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue tax rate, must be a record vote, and at least sixty percent of the members of the governing body must vote in favor. So, our charter currently is not in compliance with the tax code. So, by saying to comply with the tax code gives you the ability, under normal circumstance, for a majority of the council to vote to, to approve, but if it there, if it exceeds the, the no new tax rate, then you have to have sixty percent of the council approving.
Okay. Questions, council? Okay, thank you.
Next is Article six, section nine of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to remove the requirement that the budget be finally adopted not later than the twenty-seventh day of the last month of the fiscal year, and provide that the final adoption of the budget shall be in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. Again, that twenty-seventh day does not comply with what the local government code requires in terms of the adoption of the budget.
What does the, what does the state code require?
It does not speak to a particular day, and we've had that discussion, is the local government coding together with the tax code, because you adopt your budget before you adopt your tax rate. because you adopt your budget before you adopt your tax rate. So it's confusing, and they, they don't provide a date certain, so to take the date out of the charter complies with the, the, the local government code as well as the tax code.
Okay.
And again, the general citizenry have to understand what it is they're trying to do. Or what we're trying to do.
I'm sorry. Did you have something?
I do. I don't think most citizens are going to understand.
There's a lot of them.
Yeah, what we do in compliance to the state and our budget by the twenty-seventh day. I don't know that there's any other way to amend the charter. And I try to make this as simply, well, first of all, they have to know what the charter says. Exactly. Because this is telling you what the change is going to be, or what we're intending to change to be.
It's, it's just like on that other one where you can't owe money if you're going to run for office, but it, we, if it fails, we really can't enforce it, but we, we have to put it on there because we keep trying to get it changed. Because I think the citizens that read it think, well, no, I don't think they should owe money. And that's why they vote it down. But we're actually, actually asking to change it because of the way that the tax, I mean, because of the way that state, the state.
The state has it. Could, could it be simply put that we would be in compliance with the state? Well, most of these, we say that. But again, the voter needs to know, should ask the question, well, what does the state require? Can't put all of that in there.
No.
That's where the voters just have to trust that we're trying to bring our charter in compliance with the Texas Local Government Code.
Or educate themselves prior to the election.
Well, yes.
And, and you know.
It's a lot of digging for them.
I mean, we, we all go to the polls where there are constitutional propositions on the ballots, and you find yourself going there and reading them.
It's all the nuances of all this. It's just, they have to, at some point, they have to try to trust that we're just trying to do the right thing.
Okay, where are we? Section six, I mean, Article six, section ten of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to remove the requirement that the adopted budget be filed with the county clerk of Jefferson County and the state comptroller of public accounts in Austin, and provide for the budget to be instead, for the budget to instead be posted on the city's website.
Because the reason you would file it is because you need it to be public record, but if you're going to put it on the website, it doesn't have to be public record.
And again, state law allows for it to be posted by the city clerk on the city's website rather than the county clerk and the comptroller.
Next item?
Next item. Article six, section twenty of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to remove the requirement that the capital program be adopted on or before the twenty-seventh day of the last month of the current fiscal year, and provide that the adoption of the capital program be in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. And that's similar to the one we just did on the twenty-seventh day on the adoption of the budget. Which allows flexibility and doesn't tie you down to the twenty-seventh day, which is not in compliance with the state government, local government code.
Okay.
Article fifteen, section three of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended to remove the requirement that ordinances granting franchises be read at three separate regular meetings of the city council and publication for four weeks in a newspaper of general circulation, and provide that the franchise shall take effect thirty days after passage by the city council and publication on the city's website. This takes out all of the cumbersome process of franchise approvals on the three readings or the three meetings and the four weeks of publication, which is expensive.
Well, and the franchisees get impatient because it takes so long.
It takes so long, yeah. And it, this will take effect thirty days after passage and posting on the city's website.
Okay.
Okay. Article fifteen, section four of the charter of the city of Beaumont be amended by the repeal of section four relating to the effective date and publication exceptions applicable to the granting of sidetrack, spurred track, or switching privileges granted by franchise.
Okay.
Okay. That's just the housekeeping thing.
Yeah.
Okay, next is Article seventeen, section eleven of the charter of the city of Beaumont be repealed to remove the prohibition on a person's qualification to hold municipal office or employment who is in arrears and the payment of taxes or other liabilities due to the city. And that's similar to the, the one we discussed at Article three, section three. Far or against?
And we've had this on there before and it failed. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So this was repealed in May of ninety-eight. What did it originally say then? Or when did this become unconstitutional? I guess it's my very question.
Well, we, it's been on the, it's been on the charter change in the May elections more than once.
The way it read, "No person shall be qualified to hold a municipal office or serve the city in any other capacity for which compensation is paid who is or may become while in service in arrears and the payment of taxes or other liabilities due to the city."
And it failed?
Yeah.
Shows in his charter that it's still in there, and that's a mistake.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And those are your proposed charter amendments.
Okay, so we need to bring this back for an action item?
We plan on bringing it back next week. The county clerk is wanting us to have it approved and to them by the sixteenth. Sixteenth.
Thank you, Mary. Going back, Article three, section two. Talking about number and term. I would like to, no, it's not on there. I would like to place an item on there for consideration for the rest of the council to add for moving to three-year terms versus two-year terms and have three-year term limits or three term limits.
So nine years?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't have a problem with it at all, but I will say that we did try to do that once before, the three-year terms, and it failed, but we could try it again.
Three, three-year term?
With not to, not to exceed three of the three-year terms. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think you'd like to see something in writing before you have it on an action item.
Do we have to vote on each item individually?
Unless there's a general consensus to approve everything that's been proposed. I mean, typically, you would vote on each and every one individually because there would be some in opposition to moving forward with a particular amendment.
Okay, but you could do it like the city attorney did tonight, split it all out in one resolution, right?
I could, I could do it either way.
Be easier if you just vote.
The easiest way to just vote them up and down all at once.
Except for the new one that Councilmember Neil just brought up. We need to just, I mean, there might be councilmembers that.
Again, just to follow your own rules. We can definitely do that. Just need to know who the second is. Put it on the agenda for consideration. And we can do it in, in this, or I can do it in this memorandum next Tuesday. So it'd be a resolution to approve these proposed charter amendments, like you saw on the screen. And we can add yours in there for consideration, just let me know who the second is. And then you could, you know, vote yes, no on any of them, all of them, place on that.
Well.
Councilmember Neil, that's by position? Is that what you're?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It, it sounds simple.
Well, one of the reasons.
I'll put it in the paper. The reason why I say that is because you need to give some thought to. Once you've exhausted your three, three-year term.
Can you come back?
If, can you come back, or when can you come back?
Yeah, you got to sit out at least one three-year term.
Well, that's, that's something that needs to be there.
Who have already served nine years in a position.
You can't go backwards. You have to start forward.
Okay.
You're just grandfather.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it wouldn't start until the next election cycle.
Yeah.
If I can get a second, I will provide something in writing to you.
I mean, I'm sure there are stuff out there I can find, but I'd like to know what it is you're, what that you have in mind.
And is it your desire to do them both together, like the three-year and the three terms in one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then, um, once before, when we tried to do the three-year terms, because I was in favor of it, obviously, because it's hard to run every two years. But, um, at large, at that time, I was an at-large member, and one of the reasons that we were looking at it is because it gave place one and place two for at-large. And you ran separate, but not the top, you, you won by a majority, but not the top two vote getters regardless of majority like it is now. So that needs to be clarified as well, because you could go to seats one and two on the at-large seats if that is still the law. That you, yeah.
Now, you, you need to recognize and keep in mind that if you go to a three-year term, it changes your ability in terms of you're seeking other office.
I'm not seeking anything.
Now, you may not, but others might. And this is not just for the council who's sitting here. This is going to be for future councils.
Like, for instance, when Councilmember Smith ran for district clerk, when Nancy Boyle you ran for JP.
And did not have to give up her seat because it was a two-year term.
Right, because so if you go to a three-year term, you can't do that.
You resign to run.
You have to resign the minute you announce.
If there's more than one year left on your term.
I'll give her that.
You write it out and I'll talk with you about it. All right. Okay. Next item, please. Work session.
Mayor and council, the second discussion item is to review and discuss the city's sign ordinance. And this was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Getz and seconded by Councilman Neil.
Are you asking me to lead this instead of the city attorney?
Yeah, we have no idea what you're, what you wanted to talk about.
You didn't get the email that I sent explaining what I wanted to talk about?
Was that the one at three in the morning, or I don't know which one you're referring to?
Does it matter what time the email came in? Did you get it?
I, I didn't get it that night, thank goodness.
But you've seen it since then?
Yeah, I still, I think, I think.
All right, fine. I'll leave it. No problem.
Your questions were addressed, that email was addressed. His questions are addressed to the city attorney.
All right.
Not me, so I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney.
Okay, so right now, we have an ordinance where in several places, it talks about election signs and when they can. I'm sorry?
I just, I remember, I was trying to figure, I thought you were talking about the sign ordinance, like in the West End for like how many, how big the signs are. I got it now.
We have an ordinance that talks about election signs, and the same language or roughly the same language is used in these ordinances. It says that election signs, temporary in nature, sixty days minimum, less than eight feet, eight square feet in area and five feet in height and not illuminated, when placed within a residentially zoned area. This is a, an exception to the general sign requirements, and it would allow for election signs, temporary in nature, sixty days maximum, to be displayed. Election signs must be removed within ten days after the election. This ordinance is problematic for a number of reasons. First of all, it doesn't specify when you start the sixty days. Theoretically, you could have a campaign sign for fifteen days in January, fifteen days in February, fifteen days in March, and fifteen days in April. And that's sixty days. Well, that's, that's a problem right there. It can't be enforced because you don't know which period of sixty days that you've had that sign out or not. But there's other problems that's even more problematic for our, our units concerning election signs. There's section two fifty-nine point zero zero three of the Texas Election Code. And this speaks to regulation of political signs by municipality. In this section, it says that a municipal charter provision or ordinance that regulates signs may not, for a sign that contains primarily a political message and that is located on private real property with the consent of the property owner, prohibit the sign from being placed. This means that a campaign sign by state law cannot be prohibited from being placed. But then there's another even bigger problem. There's a twenty fifteen United States Supreme Court case called Reed versus somebody. Thank you. Would you like to take over now? Okay. And that says that you cannot regulate campaign signs due to their content. And you can't look at a campaign sign without making a determination that it is a campaign sign without looking at its content. So that's a big problem. We also have a problem with homeowners associations that attempt to regulate citizens that want to put campaign signs out. And that is addressed by the election code as well. And it says that a homeowners association cannot prohibit the placement of a campaign sign commencing ninety days before the election and that they have to be taken up ten days after the election. I say all that to say this. The campaign season has begun. The election season has begun. And I've got some signs out there. And I'm told that, well, despite our ordinances, we're not going to enforce them. Just kind of a wink and a nod. I don't think we should have ordinances on the book that are unenforceable. If they're not enforceable and they run contrary to the decisions of the Supreme Court of the United States, I think they need to be taken off of our general book of ordinances. So that's my concern about that. And I don't know if anybody else has any concerns about it or not, but I'm sure we'll be about to hear.
Let me ask the court, does anyone else have any concerns about the sign ordinances during election seasons? Has anyone ever been cited for a campaign sign that's been placed in the city of Beaumont during election season?
Only taken up if they're on public property.
The only one with the problem. We're not winking and nodding at anyone about campaign signs. We are aware of the Supreme Court case, Reed versus the, the city of Gilbert, where the Supreme Court did find that particular ordinance to be unconstitutional because it was content-based. We have similar problems with our ordinances as do most cities in this country. And this is not something new. The Fifth Circuit, which we would appeal to through federal courts from Texas, has just, well, back in August, took a shot at the Reed versus Gilbert. And it finally said, well, we're going to recognize in the Fifth Circuit Reed versus Gilbert and abrogate all of the cases that came through the Fifth Circuit. It was not until August that the Fifth Circuit said that, okay, we're going to knuckle under and agree with Reed. Because, just because it's on the books does not make it unconstitutional. It's called presumptively invalid. Which means that if we were to cite someone for violating the ordinance, their defense would be that your, your ordinance is unconstitutional. And it's a rebuttable presumption that we would have the ability to go in and show a court where our ordinance is valid. It's not an easy task, not one that I would guarantee you we would win, not one that I would suggest we try. But it's, as long as it's on the books and we've not been personally, as a city, challenged on that ordinance, it's presumptively invalid and it's on the books. We're not enforcing it. We got charter provisions, we just talked about that are unconstitutional, been on the books for a long time. That, they don't come off until the citizens. That, that, they don't come off until the citizens take them off. We are working, presently working on an ordinance, to bring to the planning commission, then eventually bring to you, addressing our sign ordinances. Uh, as I said again, this is not unique to Beaumont, it's all over the country. There are people out there with model ordinances, some are good, some are bad, but nobody has really found one that they like, that has been challenged and has been upheld. That's where we are.
So the only thing that we do now is if, um, a campaign sign is on, uh, public property, with that, not during the early voting period, if there's voting going on there, but, um, we would take them up, we take them to a location, and most candidates know where you go get them.
Yes.
And where, if it's on private property, um, we've not cited it.
No, we have not. If it, if it's on city right-of-way, we have every right by state law to remove signs off the cities right-of-way.
Right.
Regardless of what kind they are.
Yeah, even, even garage sales or whatever.
Whatever they are, you don't have to read them, we take them.
Yeah.
Campaign signs, as a courtesy to the candidates, we tell you, we're taking them to a certain location, you, you're welcome to come and get them.
But that's only if they're on public property.
If they're on public property.
So, I for one like the sixty days out. I mean, I recognize that some people might not want to abide by it, and I guess that's their prerogative. But I wouldn't want people putting them out a year out, or six months out, or, I mean, you'd have them everywhere. And we really, I think the aesthetics are important in our neighborhoods too, so, I, I mean, I've run fourteen campaigns, and I've never had an issue with it. And, um, and I think the sixty-day out, that's understood, is a good thing.
Well, I can tell you, when we bring an ordinance to you, there, there will be definitions of temporary signs that will have time periods in them. Regardless of the type of sign, we will define it by size, location, and time period.
When I saw this, I thought it was, um, the sign overlay district, um, that's what I thought we were talking about, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Attorney, so you said it would have some restrictions on there, but will that be enforceable?
Yes.
How?
What the courts have said is that you cannot, uh, uh, regulate a sign based upon its content, that's a First Amendment right.
So you're saying all signs?
But you can, you can enforce a sign based upon its size. For instance, in a residential district, you can say you can have a, a si- a sign of a particular size. If you have a, a one-time event, or if you have an election, you can say, you can have a sign for a period of sixty to ninety days, uh, regardless if it's a real estate sign, or if it's a election sign, temporary in nature. The problem is, if you have to read it to determine what kind of sign it is, that's a problem. But if we can say a sign six by six, you don't have to read it.
Because they say if you have to read it, then it needs to be.
It's an infringement on the First Amendment right.
Right.
Okay, so what we have now is an or- is an ordinance that is presumptively invalid. And we have never enforced, I, I asked the city clerk, have we ever enforced the sign ordinance to you, your knowledge?
Maybe once, like, um, back when Councilmember Sam, uh, back when Councilmember Smith ran, I think he put his out like probably a hundred or so days out, and didn't know we had an ordinance on the books, and of course, we had him pull those, but that's been many years ago.
You called him, you didn't cite him.
We didn't cite him, we just called him, asked him, he didn't pull up, most of the signs he didn't pull up. He pulled some, but he didn't pull them all, but we didn't cite him.
You make a courtesy call.
Right, we made a courtesy call, as we do when they're in the right-of-way. We give them an opportunity to go and pull those signs, if they don't, city will pull them, I think they go to streets, and they can go over there and pick them up.
Well, thank you.
Nobody ever gets cited.
I, um, I for one don't like to have ordinances on the books that are presumptively invalid, and that can't, and that cannot be enforced. I know that there have been cities throughout the country that have had issues where they have tried to cite, or have tried to force their citizens to remove signs after the Reed case was determined. Every single one of those cities that tried to stand behind their ordinance, lost. So, yeah, y- you know, this is, uh, this is something that we need to fix. I'm glad you're addressing it, look forward to seeing what the languages that you come up with.
Well, I can tell you, we won't be one of those cities who tried to enforce it and got knocked down in the courts.
Okay.
Even on the new one?
On the new one, we'll.
The new one, I, I would hope that we would propose something to you that would withstand constitutional attack. Not to guarantee that it won't, but.
But do we really want to? I mean, what?
Oh, I, yeah, I think you want some kind of sign regulation, or your city will be cluttered.
No, no, I don't mean, but to cite people, I mean, I don't know.
Oh, no, no, no.
I just think this has worked for many, many years, and pe- most people adhere to it, and, um, I don't know, it doesn't seem broken.
I also think that if you have an ordinance, it needs to have some bite to it, or it's not even worth the paper it's written on.
I, I agree. I agree.
Well, for instance, on the sign overlay, there's a thirty-day on a, on a, I think a banner or something in front of a business that's down Dallin Road or something. I think that you, yeah, right, Chris, and so I think that, I mean, what do we do in that case?
We enforce that, that's an overlay district.
So, and we would enforce it just by telling them to take it down.
Well, you don't have to read it to know that it's a unlawful.
Yeah, because it's, because it's been up more than the allotted period of time.
Well, isn't there a distinction between a sign on a commercial location and a personal property location?
You mean off-premise, on-premise?
Well, I'm talking about commercial versus your personal residential property. Isn't, aren't the cases?
They make distinctions between commercial signs as well, and non-commercial, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Next item, please.
This is, um, the last discussion item is to review and discuss the speed limit on residential streets. This was placed on the agenda at the request of, uh, Councilman Getz and Councilmember Neal. And I do believe that Councilman Getz will lead this item.
Thank you. So, we know that throughout our city and our neighborhood streets, a thirty mile an hour speed limit is considered prima facie a reasonable speed limit. There is a pretty large difference in the size of streets as you go throughout our city. Some streets, and wards three and four are very narrow, we have some streets like that in Ward Two as well. One street in particular has caused a, a lot of concern to almost all the citizens that live on that street, and that is, uh, Peyton Drive. Peyton Drive is not a long street, um, it runs from roughly Sally Curtis Elementary to where it terminates out on Phelan Boulevard. But it is a very narrow street, and it is lined with houses. And it has a lot of traffic on it, a lot of traffic that is going very, very fast. It's not, in my opinion, it's a fact, because we did a speed survey, and we saw cars that were going as fast as seventy miles an hour down this residential street. Josh is, is here tonight, uh, he's the one that first came to me about this concern. Um, with counsel's permission, I'd like to, uh, have Mr. Nolton come to the microphone and explain a little bit about what this concern is about, and you could, uh, tell them what you, what we've been talking about, Mr. Nolton.
Counsel, is that acceptable? Okay, yes, sir. If you don't mind, three minutes?
Oh, yeah, I'll try not even keep it that much.
Thank you.
Um, so first, I do appreciate y'all listening to us on this. Um, our street is, uh, unique in the way that it's set up, with Sally Curtis on one end, the West End Little League. And then it is also a cut-through from Dallin to Phelan, and you do avoid time by going around that way, and you don't get stuck at the lights. The only way to do that, and I've done it because I've driven my truck down there, is to speed. So what do you do? Well, I'm trying to get away from saving two minutes, so I'm going to go down Peyton Drive, and you speed. We do have the data that shows there are speeders all hours, all times. There's traffic, but the concern is, we can't let our kids go out and play. We let our kids out on the road, you hear them coming. I mean, I've many a times have run out and stood in the middle of the road to stop somebody from speeding. I've had people drive around me on people's driveways, we've seen racers go down the road. And what we're trying to do, the, the city does a great job, anytime that we request to have the police department out there, they're there, twenty-four hours. And they do a great job, and then over time, the speed grows and grows. And the thing that I, that we feel as residents on the, on the neighborhood, we have spoke collectively as a neighborhood on this, is that there's not, there's not enough initiative to keep you from speeding. So you're going thirty miles an hour, well, you push it to thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, you're still not worth writing a ticket for it. It costs the city money to have police officers out there, it costs the city money to run them through the courts, it costs, it all costs money. We're not going to write a ticket that's going to cost us money, it's going to get thrown out. I mean, we've all been there, we've all had a ticket thrown out, because we're going five, six miles an hour over. What we're asking is that the speed limit can be lowered to give our police enforcement more bite when they write a ticket. I mean, anytime anybody's doing something and it gets, hey, slow down, right? Anytime, you get a construction site, slow down, what do we do? Slow traffic people, you go to a refinery, slow down, you go through, anywhere we do, we're stuck, hey, just slow down, all right, let's slow down. And that's what we're asking for, can we just try to get it to slow down? Our kids, we can't let them play in the front yard, you can't let our kids go out without supervision, we can't. They walk to school, they know they have to walk so far from the road, they're up in the grass, they get splashed with water, because people are in a hurry to go down. They hit the school zone, and bam, they're back up to thirty or more. Buses, UPS, put two UPS vehicles on that narrow street passing each other, it's pretty scary. So I do request that you guys consider that not as safety for motorists, but the citizens and the children that live there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolton.
Thank you.
Now, we asked for some enhanced police attention to this street. So from December the first through January the eleventh, the police spent a total of thirty-one and a half hours out there on Peyton. During that time, they made contact with eighty-six motorists, issued thirty-four citations, and fifty-nine warnings. Let me repeat that, in thirty-one and a half hours, eighty-six contacts, thirty-four citations, and fifty-nine warnings. We, as a council, recently lowered the speed limit on Major Drive, because we recognize that lowering the speed limit can promote a safer roadway. So, what is the authority of the city council to lower the speed limit? First of all, let me make sure you understand what I'm asking for, five miles an hour, able to lower it from thirty to twenty-five. And this is, as I believe, as a result of a petition that was signed by virtually everybody on Peyton Drive, is that right?
Forty-eight out of fifty-two.
Forty-eight out of fifty-two residents on Peyton signed a petition asking that we lower the speed limit. What does Texas law say about it? It says a city may lower the state mandated speed limit by performing an engineering and traffic investigation and determining that the prima facie speed limit is unreasonable or unsafe for that road. Before lowering the speed limit, the city must follow the procedures for establishing speed zones, which can be found at the Department of Transportation's website, and considers the width and condition of the pavement, the usual traffic at the affected area, and other circumstances. However, the only instance in which a city may lower a speed limit without a traffic study to as low as twenty-five miles per hour is if the road is in an urban district, is less than four lanes, and is not a state highway. We did a speed study on Peyton, but we don't have to. What I'm proposing is that pursuant to the Texas Transportation Code, that we empower ourselves to lower the speed limit from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour, whereupon a set percentage of the residents along that roadway that have to live with that and see that every day, and put their children's life at risk every day, sign a petition asking for it. Now, I want, it shouldn't be just one person or two people that live along a roadway, they get to, you know, you don't have the tail wag the dog. It should be a relatively high percentage of the people along the roadway, eighty, eighty-five percent, something like that. It's an arbitrary number, we can talk about that. But if you get that percentage threshold met, and these people come to the ci- to, to their elected representatives, us, asking for that street to have its speed limit lowered from thirty to twenty-five, I think we need to consider it, and I think we need to do it. If they can't petition for redress of their grievances to us and have us act, then why do they need us? It's nothing for the city to go change a speed sign from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour. Will it make a difference? I don't know, will it make a difference on Major Drive? I don't know, enforcement is always going to be the issue. But I do know, like Mr. Nolton said, that if you have a speed limit of thirty, you know, people will often push the boundaries just a little bit, push the envelope thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and they will probably not get a citation. However, if you're twenty-five and you're going thirty-four, well, now you're nine miles an hour with the speed limit. And that starts pretty much ensuring that the police are going to write you a citation. So, this is just a proposal for tonight, it's for discussion. But if there's a consensus, I would really like to see us come back with a, uh, uh, some sort of language in the form of a, uh, a resolution or ordinance that would, uh, address us and, uh, address this, and allow the citizens to petition their elected officials for redress of their grievance.
Okay. That concludes our last item. Um. Yeah, I'll read it right here, I put it right in front of me, and I didn't see it, right? I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will, the council will, I almost got it memorized and I looked away. The council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one point zero seven-one of the Government Code, Claim of Lauren Lewis. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak, if you would like to make public comment today, and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the officer, we will call out your name. As I mentioned earlier, we would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Do you have any?
Oh, I'm sorry, James Eller, twenty-three thirty-two Avalon, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, sir, if you, if you choose to.
Just to be heard, heard clearly. Uh, I appreciate y'all for the evening meeting, uh, for, for, uh, for that. Uh, just want to address a couple of things, we have the, uh, dog park, and I'm going backwards on this. The dog park, uh, over at, I read, I live, well, I have a house over in that same area. Uh, the fence, I think, is either eight or ten foot tall over there, and I'm just questioning as in the cost, as in eight to ten foot tall compared to a six-foot fence. We're not talking about huge dogs, and we're not talking about horses, we're talking about, you know, dogs that are not going to scale the fence. So, cost-effective wise, why would it be seventy-five thousand dollars compared to, we could drop that maybe even to half if we used, uh, proper measurements, give me? Uh, look into that as in, uh, uh, finances. Uh, look into the, uh, energy, as in running at eight thousand to twelve thousand dollar line. I mean, if they haven't bid a job before, and they don't understand how much it takes to get a line to a, a source, you know, from source to, to, uh, to where it needs to be, they don't need the job. Uh, you can get private contractors in, and you have telephone poles across the street, actually, from both, or within fifty feet of the location. It shouldn't be fifty feet equals out twelve thousand dollars, if I'm correct on that. I went to Home Depot, two ought gauge wire, if you run three of those, it's three hundred dollars just for the wire. Uh, you have a breaker box that's, uh, twenty-three dollars, you have, uh, breakers that are ten dollars a piece, and that's four breakers, uh, so that's forty. You're looking at around five hundred dollars for materials. So I don't understand your, your proposal for twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars for the same materials. We're looking at camera systems. Uh, instead of having a Wi-Fi or cellular, uh, unit, uh, to twelve thousand dollars a, a, a month, I think we talked about, a thousand dollars a month, and then we're twelve thousand dollars per park, uh, and that's just. a thousand dollars a month, and then we're twelve thousand dollars per park, uh, and that's just two parks. And we're not talking about like Sprott Park, where a lady that lives over on Cadillac Lane, she goes to Roger Park because she doesn't feel safe. So we have other parks that can be addressed, but we're looking at another twelve thousand dollars each year in addition on cellular costs, just to send a signal. We can build, you know, steel boxes and have it where BPD actually goes out and retrieves it, just like whenever I have a problem at my house, I give BPD an actual SIM, you know, SIM card, and then they review it. We're not gonna catch somebody that same day regardless. So as long as there's a report filed on a broken window and a car broken into, we can always go out, retrieve the information, and then come back, and then display it, and look on it, uh, screen at the, at the police department. We could do this. Each park, we can have cameras for around probably five thousand dollars or less. Uh, there's also private sectors that can be involved, as in sponsoring a lot of these things. I don't know if that's been offered. I don't know if anybody's even looking into actually having somebody do that. Uh, to highlight on, uh, speed, uh, on, uh, Peyton. Uh, Samuel's had, uh, worked with a guy that just passed away, uh, recently on Ada. Uh, Ada, actually, in the north end of town, needs to be dropped down as well, if we're talking about dropping out of speed. Also, there's, uh, Todd Street that has the same type of problem. So like I say, I'd like to have y'all give a little bit of equal opportunity to all the sides of town, and look into the cost on those particular items.
Thank you, Mr. Eller. I'm sure there's a lot of streets that would think the same. Thank you very much.
Addie Allen, ninety-six, ninety-five Cross, Beaumont, Texas?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember-
Yes, ma'am.
City manager, city attorney. My name is Addie Allen, and I'm not standing at the podium because of sanitary reasons, COVID. Uh, but I would like to thank, um, the Code Enforcement Department for sending a letter addressing my concern. But still, for some reason, uh, like Councilman Neeld said, if you have an ordinance, and I may not get it just right, what does it work being on the books? So, uh, ordinance, Section ten, six, three, reading. The statement of expenses shall, in addition to stating the amount of such expenses, provide date upon which such work was done, and a description of the lot or premises upon which work was done. Dates are still not being provided. Uh, if, if, on the letter, they changed the location. On the information I gave you last week, it said ten-ten Chihuahua. I got the letter from Code Enforcement. Now it says ten-sixty Chihuahua, which is it? But bottom line is, if I provide you services going through bidding, I'm expected to itemize what I'm gonna do. So if the city cuts grass, why can't you get your documentation straight? Provide the dates if you are going to charge someone. Now, I do have dates of my cuts. I've been up here too many times with this situation. You know, and like the gentleman said, there's problems all over the city. You know, Weetabaken is just one of them. It's personal to me. I don't wanna run for office, but if I did, I couldn't because you're charging me three cuts, now four, and you can't tell me when you did it. So if Ms. Lynn Foot can read the ordinance, and the city manager asks Ms. Lynn Foot and Mr. Chris Boone to get with me, they have not. And I've, I've sit up here and listened to everything that's interesting to me. But I still don't understand why a citizen would have to come here month after month. We've got at large council people, we have a council person that represents Chihuahua. Why can't you? It's simple. If you can talk about a dog park, if you can talk about, you know, street, uh, speed limits, you know, capital funds, forty-four million, it's a little piece of money that you're asking me for. And I've said, I'll pay if you tell me what I'm paying for. Thank you. Thank you for your services, and I hope you all have a good night. Be safe. And I came out of overflow because you had a man sitting on the front row without a, a mask. He pulled his mask down. So if you're gonna have a nice meeting at night, do the overflow.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, and we will make sure that we check that. In addition, if you do come back, please refrain from calling staff members by name, but by position. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Per our rules. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak today? Nobody back there? Okay, all right. All right, thank you. Um, I'll move to Councilmember comments, and I'll start with you, Councilmember Mouton, please.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Samuel. Councilmember Pate.
No comment.
Councilmember Felschau. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Somebody's gotta talk. I first wanna say thank you to our city manager and city attorney and their staff for working on this city charter. I know you guys spent a lot of time on that. I appreciate that. And like we said, it's been close to twenty years since we've updated this, two thousand and three to be exact. But now that that's behind us, I would like for us to come up with a systematic way to start working through the ordinances. And I know that's gonna be a big undertaking too, because we literally have thousands of them. And, uh, see if we can't start going through these, uh, in some type of way. And I look forward to working with you guys on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was told tonight that the items that I asked would be placed on the agenda were something that was personal for me. It's not personal for me. I'm representing the people that elected me, people that look to me to put forth their ideas, and that's what I do. I represent the constituents that put me in office. I happen to think that the idea of a camera system that both of our high-compact trails is a very good idea, and a needed idea. And maybe, as Mr. Eller suggested, they can be brought for less money. You know, I'm not an IT expert. I'm not a camera expert. I'm not a security expert. I rely on staff to give me the numbers. So, you know, if that can be looked at and brought in for lesser money, great. That's fantastic. And I, I hope we do. I understand it's table till next week, and, you know, I'm confident that we'll have some additional information then. Same thing for the dog park. You know, when people in the city ask for a dog park, they bring it to me. It's my obligation to them, to represent them, and try to get this moved. There were several times tonight where it was suggested that the way I'm doing this is not the right way. And yet we had the city manager stand there and say, I have every right to do it. Just because something has been done the same way for twenty years doesn't mean that that's the only way it should be done. In fact, maybe there's an argument to be made that if you haven't been able to get something done after a period of time, you need to do it a different way. So with that being said, I'm looking forward to revisiting these items next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I wasn't, um, really gonna make any comment, but I'll make a quick one. I, I want to clarify that I don't think anyone is saying that you didn't have the right to do it. But I do think, in fairness to your council colleagues, we need to have a discussion before they're pushed into a vote. That's all I have to say. I'm not asking for give and take. I'm just saying that we need to be fair and treat everyone up here with respect because it takes four votes to do anything. So I think, um, that the reason why that that's been done that way is because we need to have a discussion on it. We can't just say, okay, you gotta vote tonight, but you don't know any of the details. So with that said, and I know you said, well, you can ask your questions now. We can't get all our questions answered if it's up for a up-down vote. I have to say that because I firmly believe in that, and I do feel like, um, that it put your council colleagues in a box. And I don't, I don't think that's the right thing to do, but that's up to you, and you certainly have the right to do it that way. We will now recess into executive session. Thank y'all for coming.